All right, do we have any significant number of people on Zoom?
Uh, yeah, we have a few.
Can we say hi to Lynn?
And BJ's on. Yep, so Lynn's on.
Okay, all right, let's call this workshop to order. This is a workshop for City of Holiday Island, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Let's start with the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What's your name, hold on?
The door swung open. You got it, Ken?
Yes. Okay. Councilmember Doogus?
Here.
Okay.
Here.
You're on, okay. Councilmember Graves?
Here.
Councilmember Elway?
Here.
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Redmond?
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor? Okay, I don't need to worry about calling him quorum because we don't have to decide on anything today. Uh, purpose of the workshop is to brainstorm and prioritize activities for twenty twenty-two, and I have a list of subjects. Uh, this isn't necessarily an exhaustive list of subjects, but uh, it's a place to start, I guess. This is gonna be relatively free-flowing, but um, basically what we're, what I think we need to accomplish here today is to set some priorities for this year and uh, and maybe make some assignments, but not necessarily try to solve any of the problems here today. Otherwise, we'll be here yet at ten o'clock tonight. Well, I won't be. All right, um, the first one might not truly take very long. But I did want to discuss whether or not there's any interest in changing the term of office for the council members from two years to four years. If there is, there's a certain amount of work that has to be done.
I, I remember reading the statute on it a year or two, when we were going through the incorporation process. And if I remember correctly, it takes a, an election for that to happen, which my way of thinking would be that we, that unless we wanna pay, pay for a special election and if we wanna do this, we would have to get this included in the twenty twenty-two general election.
That's why I'm, that's why I'm breaking it up now.
Right, and that would not be applicable until the twenty twenty-four election.
Right.
So I, 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 I think there's probably some merit into that. Is there any way to stagger them?
No, what, in the first election, they are staggered. You, you set up position one and two, and you definitely get one over the two-year.
So there'd be one from each ward every four years, but then two years.
Right, like, position two, position one would be, in twenty twenty-four, position one would be four years, position two would be two years, and thereafter, everybody, they all be four years. So you would have, you'd be rotating after the.
I personally think two, four years is too long, too old as everybody is out here.
You're talking to me?
Just a beer.
I, I think.
I don't know what the pro- pro- the process is, though, if someone didn't wanna stay on past two years and wanted to drop off.
Oh, you resigned.
You resigned, but how's that replacement handled?
I don't know, I mean, it's uh, well, you know, the, the thing about it is it will get you into a staggered replacement.
To me, that, that's the, that's the only issue, is that with two-year terms, there's no way of staggering the terms unless we wanna pay for a special election every other year.
Yeah, uh, I think in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two election, the mayor and the city clerk are, will be four years.
Right, this is just.
Already, yes.
Yeah, this is just for council members.
Right. We're not gonna stagger them, two years is fine, but how much would a special election cost? Cause it would be nice to have them staggered, it's gonna be a little tough. It costs you four, five thousand. Six new people to come in.
Four or five thousand dollars for an election. Cause they have to hire all the people and all, bring all the ballots, and they're not gonna go cheap on you.
I talked to Jerry about something we were doing in the last special election there.
There's no urgency to do it, I just thought that if, if we wanna do it now would be the time, because like you said, there's a big, big, big timeline between when you decide you wanna do it and you're actually on a four-year cycle.
Right, it would be twenty twenty-four before you get on a four-year cycle, so.
So are we gonna take a vote on that the next regular meeting next week?
No.
Uh, in this meeting, all we need to decide is whether it's, whether, whether there's any interest in it, in which case, somebody would have to volunteer to advise, to do some research and advise us to what would be necessary.
Does anybody know what the surrounding cities are doing? I, I don't know, and why it wasn't two or four years.
I guess it was a four-year, but I, I think there is an advantage in having two-year terms in that you may get more people being interested in running it.
I, I think.
Totally a two-year commitment.
And what's the likelihood that, that we have an election every two years, that some of the existing members will rerun? So that you won't, you won't have staggered, but you still won't have an all-new. Especially this next one, when there's gonna be six instead of five.
And you'll have the continuity of the mayor and clerk too, so.
Will we?
Yeah, cause they're four years.
Oh, that's right.
I have a comment.
Yes, Lynn?
I am not interested in four-year terms because we have elections at large. Until we change that, I won't promote four-year terms.
Okay.
I'm not interested.
I'm not interested, I'm just gonna take it off the.
Good, we got one thing scratched from the list already. The whole, the meeting was worthwhile already.
I'm not interested in next one.
For the record, I'm against it for a whole different reason than Lynn is, so.
I am, as long as you're against it, I guess, unless you just wanna ban.
All right, the, the next thing on the list, I don't think really requires any discussion. It's just, it's just a priority for us for this year. Uh, we're already working on it, we being Lynn, and um, so, you know, that one, the next two here, I think are priority one and two for the city.
On the zoning ordinance, do we have a timeline, are we gonna try and get that?
Yep.
Out of here this month, or it could be February?
Maybe, maybe in February, so we're talking about Tuesday.
Yeah, February meeting for the zoning ordinances. So any, any other discussion on this?
Now it seems to be the linchpins for everything else we're trying to get in.
All right, health and sanitation and trash pickup. Um, this doesn't have to be done in one, um, you know, all at one time. We can pass a significant.
That's good.
Portion of.
I looked at health and sanitation. I looked at that this morning, and that's a lot to chew on.
I think we should pick up sections at a time.
Yeah.
A hundred, two sections at a time. With more priority ones first.
However, I would have to say that trash pickup is maybe the number-one issue with health and sanitation, with that title of the municipal code. Not from the standpoint of all of the law-abiding citizens that pay somebody to pick up their trash, regardless of who the somebody is. We have no way of enforcing that people find that somebody and pay them to pick up their trash. Um, we already have three, at least three properties where people are just piling up trash bags in their yards.
And we have others that are dumping.
Yeah, so if we don't have a mandatory trash pickup, then it's going to be hard to deal with those people, so we can just throw that out there.
When do you anticipate, you know, you bet, you gave us that three or four months ago, and I just ignored it.
Uh, I. It, we, the health and sanitation ordinance will be on next week's council meeting agenda. Maybe not in ordinance form yet, but we will be discussing it.
Are you gonna tell us which section we're gonna?
It's the part that I put out.
No, it's more than one part.
The parts portal that I put out.
Yeah, but which part are we going to work on then? Right, first.
When did you put this out?
I don't know, it was three months ago.
Oh, that, that was way ahead.
It said Title V or something.
There's a couple of sections in there that are reserved, and I, you know, we can and will reserve trash collection and not include that in the first wave, but the rest of it is pretty straightforward. I don't know why we wouldn't pass it all at one man.
Okay, so we're gonna do that this month?
Right.
Well, this month is kind of, I don't think we can do it this month without a specific ordinance for it at the meeting, and I think we need more.
Well, we're just gonna review the.
Text of it.
But yeah, you can review it this month, start reviewing it this month.
Yeah.
But it sounded like you thought it would be passed this month.
No, no, no. I, I just wanted to know.
Since I sent it out three months ago, I would've assumed that people were already reviewing it.
Oh, right. Like we had nothing else to look at.
Okay, um, the next one is a more difficult problem, police department and district court. I think that by the end of the year, we need to have a plan for that. I don't know that we will actually implement anything this year relative to that.
To the district court?
Yeah, to setting up a police department or having a contract.
Tell us what your idea of a police department is.
Oh, we, we, the way the proposed ordinance was put out initially, where the uh, you know, we had an ordinance ready to pass, and I pulled it the day before the meeting because I didn't feel we were ready, but in that ordinance, it was based on a recommendation from our city attorney. We would pass an ordinance establishing a police department, and note in the ordinance that staffing for the police department would be provided through contracting with the county.
That's, that's not enough in my mind to have a definition. Is it gonna be a department that just has a line item on the budget, and that's all there is to the department?
I think that's why it's on this agenda, that, that somebody needs to work on that.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what's in your head about it.
Uh, well, my head is empty. No, let me, let me put it a little better. I didn't have a, I didn't have a complete plan in my head, which is why I pulled the ordinance the first time when we were.
I, I thought we did, Dan, I thought we talked all along, even back during the campaign, the contracting with the sheriff.
We did.
And we kept waiting for the HICs to come to a meeting with us, and they, they said, screw you, and, and did it on their own.
It, you know, it was a, it, there was a series of, a series of events that, that caused me to not move forward because I didn't think we were really solid on what we wanted to do yet. And um, the first was understanding what it takes to have a district court, and who would do the prosecuting attorney, but I think we have that figured out now. And then the second was that we would have, the, the city would have the contract with the sheriff's department, and then that, you know, got waylaid, cause the district decided to keep their contract this year, and which put us in a position of having to negotiate a contract from scratch with the county, and uh, which means that we would have to put together a proposal, give it to the court board, have them approve the funding for it, and then have it be approved by the county judge. And at the time, we were in the middle of a potential lawsuit about the turnback money for, I mean, the property tax.
Uh-huh, I understand all that, but what you just said five minutes ago, has to have something in place by the end of the year. I mean, that will be two years into the new city, that, you know, we have no enforcement mechanism.
For, for traffic and stuff?
Yeah, for anything, really.
Yeah, I, I've been talking with, as far as I know, district doesn't have a contract for this year.
They said they did.
No, they don't.
So, like, we don't have any deputy patrolmen right now at home?
They haven't signed a contract for this year.
They didn't sign the contract for last year until October, it's just.
I don't know, the problem is I just talked to a member. Anyway, I, I.
Are there another, are there aren't any other options, like contracting with Eureka?
Well, that's, that's why it's on the list here, it's uh, I think it's still a, an unfinished project as far as.
I think we need to go.
Exploring what all are, what all the alternatives are.
I think we need to go ahead and get the contract with the county as now, I mean, like six months. And then, and then, as, as a forward-looking thing, look into the police department or the city for twenty twenty-three.
Do we need a police department for the city in order to hire or rent a cop? Is that what Desmond was saying?
We need to have a police department in order to have district court.
I did.
The law says that for cities of the second class that have a police department, they can, they can set up a district court or enter into an agreement, and.
So that's, that's the, that's the, what's pushing the police department?
Right, but if we can have a, if we can have what we, is recognized as a police department with one de- county deputy, we can, we can have a police department within the city with probably a smaller footprint than we're, we think we have to have, and we have better control. And I, I, I would like to see us do it that way, but.
I think there's some practical problems with having one deputy out here being paid for by the county.
I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of problems there, and I've been upset ever since they went this path because we laid that out in our footprint three years ago, that that's what we're gonna do when we.
I'm just saying, nobody is disagreeing that it's necessary. I'm just saying, if we rush into it, we're going to find out that we made some mistakes. One possible mistake is, if we have one de- deputy being paid by the district and one deputy being paid by the city, what laws are they enforcing? Is the city cop and only the city cop enforcing city laws? And is the other cop enforcing county laws? I don't think we know the answers to that.
We have talked to the, you know, the only way we're gonna find out is sit down and talk with the sheriff.
That's why I have it on here.
I wonder what they do, is they're traveling through Eureka or Maryville, where they have city cops, and they see a crime, some sort of traffic violation that, that's permanent to the city, and they.
They probably call the city police department.
Give them a ticket.
They, yes.
They can give a ticket anywhere.
Yes, they can.
Anywhere in the county, but.
What's the problem?
I don't know, un- until you get to court and they, you know, and the arresting officer has to be there, and somebody challenges whether or not he's enforcing a city law because he's not a city policeman, and I don't know. I'm not, I don't know anything about it.
Do you think this, this issue of city cop, HICs and cop could be resolved through this item called long-range planning with HICs?
No, I think we need, I think we need to talk to the sheriff.
Well, I'm, you know, I understand.
I, I think just property owners, they oughta, people oughta start questioning the HICs contract.
They already are.
Well, they're not listening, so they need to get louder. And I think this, this council needs to get a little louder with, just one answer.
I have to talk to everybody I can talk to on it, and, but I, I, I think, I don't know how you wanna do it, but we need to go, you know, so, the sooner the better. We need to have a conversation with the sheriff about that very issue and see um, how he could operate under those circumstances, and, you know, what services we could have, because uh, all this crap we're doing with the zoning ordinances and the health and sanitation ordinance is for naught if we can't enforce it.
Well, the policeman doesn't have to enforce those.
We can't have, we can't have a district court, we can't, we can't enforce the or- we can't enforce the ordinance without a district court.
That's true.
And, and we, I, you know, we've gone too far, we've done too much work, and we've made too many promises to set on our butts and not get it done.
I take offense to the saying on our butts part, and I'm here forty hours a week working on stuff.
You, you wanna throw me into, I, I'll get ahold of anybody I can get ahold of, it'll talk.
All right, but I.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna go around you, I, that's why I've not said anything.
And, and nobody disagrees with what you're saying, Dan, but when you said, get it done by the end of the year, that's, that's not right.
Well, I don't, maybe there's an alternative to that, but the county set their budget last November. So if it's, if it's gonna take any amount of money on the county's part, um, they're gonna have to go out and hire another deputy. They're not gonna do that unless they have some sort of long-term guarantee that that, that somebody is gonna be paying for that person.
We need to get it, we need to get a contract together and get it submitted to the.
If somebody wants to volunteer to sit down with the JPs or with the sheriff or, or whoever and put together a plan, then.
By the way, we can't do two guys, can't, I was gonna say, that's a problem, but we can't get together. How, oh, he could do that. You can, by yourself. You know, I, I sent through several of those contracts with the sheriff's department and the BOC, and basically, the only thing that would probably would change would be the enforcing of city ordinances. And whether, you know, we don't know if this, um, you know, if, and I would, you know, if you give me the, go ahead and go over and talk to the sheriff, I'd be polite, please do it, and you see what, and come back and have something by the next meeting.
I think you, yeah.
Just to see what his thoughts are on it.
Yeah, my blessing to do that, um, it may be just as beneficial, or maybe even more beneficial, to talk to um, one or more of the JPs and find out what they're going to require in order to rubber stamp our request when it comes to them.
Well, we've only got one JP that's, well, they got two that are be interested in, we're, we're trying to do something, you know, Chuck Olson and Jack, I don't, I don't know who the JP is from Eureka now, because I think he died or something, didn't he?
What, what's her name?
The only two I know is Chuck.
The lady that ran, the lady that ran two years ago. Do you think of her name?
Yeah, I mean, I know it changed recently, or something, somebody was in there for a long time, and.
But she was at the forum that day, was she on?
Well, Jack would be a good place to start.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
But yeah, I, I, I'm all for setting up a police department if we need it to get a district court.
Well, I, I think long-range, we need to explore.
When I think of police department, I think of just the processes of police department without any personnel because the personnel's gonna be a contract person.
The law doesn't prohibit that, I mean, still, still a police department.
Yeah, you'd have some processes for processing fines and working with the district court.
You know, hopefully that they would give up on that next year, but given their current track, I don't know whether they will. So I think we need.
But we all know the reason that they kept the deputy.
That is not valid, and.
No.
Anyway, um, but I think, I, long-range, I, I would like to see, be looking long-range to see, you know, what would be the minimum that we could, you know, set up an in-house department. I mean, I don't, I don't know where it is, but I, I.
And I would, I would urge a closer, looking relationship between Dan and the chair of the BOC. There's no reason y'all can't be talking to each other all the time. As well as Dan.
Okay, so Ken's gonna take on putting together a plan for how we, uh, how we get to district court is basically what the plan.
Well, you know, the, you, you know, most of its worked out, you know, uh, Butch Berry has said he was amiable to sharing the costs of district court, the district court judge, uh.
Ramsey?
Who, Ramsey.
Ramsey.
He said that, Justin thinks it's not a problem, he gave us a, a copy of the agreement that they had with County Council. Uh, and that's all, uh, Mayor Eureka asked for was, you know, our, our plan, which he said would be that, I, I think I have that, I think, letter from yesterday night. Uh, but I, I, I think we need to get something in place, man, by April. So that we can go forward with the zoning and the.
If it's possible, you're not gonna get any arguments, you just, I, I'm just not sure that we're in control of the timeline.
Well, we, we need to find out that we're not, and I'll find out if we are or not.
We haven't quit letting HICs set the timeline.
I ain't gonna, you know, I'm tired of talking to them, they won't listen to it.
But the county, that's gonna be setting the timeline.
I understand that, but there were several months you said that you were gonna go meet with Danny, waitin' on Danny, and it was not reported, that just, that meeting never happened.
Right.
I don't think that was your fault.
All right, next thing I put on the list was something, I don't know if we need to consider that this year or not, but business licensing, not from the standpoint of generating revenue, but from the standpoint of understanding what's going on, and probably have them basically, just having some, you have control over it.
I mean, are, are we talking about all biz- all businesses? Uh, however, did that, would we consider something?
If we wanna control Airbnb, VRBOs.
That's the next thing.
Business license is the first step.
That's kind of, I think, how I ended up putting it on here, I don't know.
And there oughta be plenty of references, you know, with, cause every city has them.
Yeah, every city has business.
Uh, I don't know what.
I sent Dan a thing last night on uh, the, the VRBOs, uh, regulations and fines and taxing on uh, rentals, uh, in various cities across the United States, and uh. they've been separated, as Dan has alluded to, several times, they're commencing, uh, court rulings, uh, that limited what you could do with VR, uh, VRBOs, uh, but there was a case in October of last year that set aside one of the main rulings and set, set up some guidelines on how you can can, can do that. If, if, they can't, they can't, if, if they're, if it's addressed in the covenants of, of a unit, then you can't have rentals and you can enforce it, even if they are, uh, there are some guidelines that you can, as far as taxing and, uh, so, and I, I sent that to you and I've got some more than that.
Was that with the state of Arkansas or some other state?
I don't know, but there's been several articles in the newspaper lately about VRBOs, uh, primarily over in Rogers.
Rogers has done it.
Fayetteville.
Little Rock and.
And then there's been some rulings that you can't, that other than that, this is, like you say, a covenant. Uh, you can't prohibit VRBOs from being in residential areas.
But it doesn't prohibit you from, from, uh, requiring to pay taxes.
Right, but you, you just can't say, there can't be any unless it, you know, it'd be a special covenant for, for an area.
Uh, but I think the, the, uh, the Texas Supreme Court ruled couldn't touch them. And then, uh, the, uh, a federal court, uh, I'm sorry, I said October, it was July of twenty twenty-one. Arlington ban on short-term rentals stands after recent court ruling, so that, uh, that was overturned.
Arlington was able to ban them?
Yeah. Arlington, Texas. The ci, the city of Arlington's ban on majority short-term rentals is standing after the latest legal chapter, Second District Court appealed the court work. Recently upheld the city of Arlington's regulations for listings on sites out there, uh, B and B and VRBO.
But I, 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 you know, I think we gotta be really, really careful, really careful here because that has been a major part of Holiday Island since the state.
I, I don't think any, I, I don't think anybody wants bans, but there, there's some revenue to be made.
Well, I think there's.
Is that, that, like, these people that manage the condos that, that I had, I, I wasn't in the program, but they, they paid taxes to Eureka. And.
I think you mentioned that.
Yeah. And, I mean, there's no reason that that, that can't be changed.
Yeah, if they're paying, there's no denying us.
Especially those managed by, uh, a property manager, I mean, that's a business. And, you know, there might be a distinction on renting.
I read, I think it was Rogers or Fayetteville, or something about her has raised, uh, tax on, on short-term rentals like that, and my comment was is that, you know, those VRBOs were happy that they were doing that because that money's used for advertising. And that provided more advertising for.
I think that's all you could use it for, you know.
Not with the Arkansas there is.
Now, I will comment, I had a phone call yesterday and I referred him on to Dan from some person who was, worked for a business that somehow they monitor the VRBOs or the short-term rentals, I suppose, maybe watch on the internet to look at their advertising and so on, and they monitor that to make sure that they're properly licensed and that they're paying the proper fees and taxes. You think what this company really does is sell software. Tell you how, if you hire somebody to work their software, then that, that, that will be a tool for tracking and monitoring the, um, VRBOs and making sure that they're, they're, they're actually collecting your tax money at home.
Well, that, um, that list of all those cities that I sent you, if you'll read it, several of them have pretty hefty fines if they catch you not having the proper license and, and, and doing it.
I think that would be good.
Yeah.
What some cities are doing, and I think Fayetteville is one of them, is they're putting, um, requirements on the structure. If you're, uh, if you're, and use your property as a VRBO, you have to have sprinklers. You have to have, have certain, and like a, say, a hotel or something, they have to have.
What's, what I would, I'm actually putting out was the Fayetteville and the high sprinkles ordinance. And they both require building inspe, building and safety inspections, fire, fire inspections, building inspections before they're legalized.
Now, all of this discussion should really be taking place under zoning because that's where this will be. All those requirements will be defined in the zoning regulations, not in business licensing.
But at least the point of business license is that there's a lot of revenue that we can collect that we're not, I mean, I think there, there are business licensing, there's occupational licensing for lumbering electricians, painters, uh, you know, people say, well, that's punitive, it's not, because if, if, uh, if you can kind of regulate who's offering these services and if they're just fly by night, you know.
Yeah, the, the safety part, driving owners.
Well.
The, the taxing and.
But the, the question for today's meeting is, do we want to, uh, develop a plan this year to, you know, to require business licenses? And somebody would have to do some research to see.
I would think it would be a very good idea.
I don't, I don't think that research would be hard, you know, like I said, all the city, uh, all the cities have licenses. All we have to do is cooperate.
I, I think.
This guy.
They're like, we're recreating Tawny Town, so we, we're looking there. Um, I, I think.
We're customizing.
Be customized. Customized. I, I think, if, if we don't, Dan. Made some big changes. At some point in time, you're going to start getting some phone calls about people or people think as illegal and, and regulated businesses, I mean, it's going to happen.
So who wants to take on, uh, business licensing and put together a proposal? I gotta get a volunteer first, otherwise it's, it's stretched from the list.
Isn't that, isn't that part of economic development?
I'll do it.
All right. I'm already getting phone calls about people wondering about, you know, business license, about getting their wanted license.
Yeah.
To establish a business.
I, I, I think it's, sir, can I just, I just want to say something. I had a B and B in Eureka for about fifteen years, and before I was able to get a license for a B and B, a letter had to go out to all the, uh, immediate neighbors and even then some to approve it or if so many, if, if so many people did not want another B and B there, they could not be done. So I was approved. Fire marshal had to pass the house, building inspector, not sure about electrician or not. But all this had to be done before I could actually advertise, start having people come in the front door. Plus, when you have a B and B, you have to live on the property.
Right.
And, um, what I'm concerned about, I've been connected with Holiday Islands since seventy-eight, starting out over there in Oak Point. What I'm concerned about is, I've taken to the street, there are now four and possibly up to seven Airbnbs. It's no longer a neighborhood, it's people coming in pulling their boat, their motorcycles, doors slamming all night long. Maybe a little too much rain down.
You kind of have limited parking there too, don't you?
What?
You have some limited parking.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have so much parking and all that, you know, um, I didn't move to Holiday Island. That would be strictly, I mean, I realize it started, Holiday Island started out, and I go all the way back when McCullin Oil opened all this. I'm going back to when people had a second home, come down there every now and then. And when I'm, my question is, I know a lot of areas that were maintained a lot better then as they were promoting Holiday Island. Now that all the people that live here, and you take your assessment fee over all these people, there's a lot of money coming into Holiday Island. Just as another example, across the street, there's five lots over there that I understand, I think Holiday Island went back to Holiday Island. I have been cutting all those for four years. Now, I know it's a fact that before, years ago, a lot of areas were maintained that are not maintained anymore. So that's a whole different subject than when I started out with. I think there should be a letter that people have to sign, being agreeing or disagreeing about Airbnbs because it's getting to be where, there's getting to be too many of them, the neighborhoods are being taken away. And so, but what I'm saying is, building inspector, fire marshal, all these things had to be done before I could open up an Airbnb, before I could open up a T and B, plus I had to live on the property. The difference now is Airbnb, you don't have to live on the property, but, um, I've seen some changes for the good and for the other. Also, when we have property over there in Oak Point, I came down to use the pool, that's when the pool had, the other pool had a dome on it. Showed them your pass, you didn't pay a fee to get in it. Now, every before you go, as a property owner, plus the eight hundred nineteen dollars I'm paying, which I like to know where, I know where some of it goes, but it certainly is for maintaining a lot of the areas. Now you go to the pool, you have to pay, you know, I think it's free for a, is the own property. Now, I think you pay for that too, and then you pay for a guest, and it's like, now that there's so much more money being brought in, why is everything, everything's extra, and it didn't, it did, it never, did not start out that way. And I know it's a fact, I don't.
That's a district issue, not a city issue.
Right, I understand that. I'm, I'm, I'm just betting what's been on my mind for a couple of years. They might read about you in the paper tomorrow, it's like, up my throat, it's like, at least I got it out.
But, uh, one, just one parting comment on, on the, uh, Airbnbs and the VRBOs and stuff like that. What I've been telling everybody, based on my limited understanding of the current state of the law in Arkansas, it says you cannot prohibit it, even if it's in a, uh, even if it's prohibited in a unit covenant. Um, I've been telling everybody that we're going to allow it, but regulate it so that it's done responsibly. And we're a long ways away from having those regulations drafted yet, but, you know, when, you know, in its final form, those regulations will deal with things like on-street parking and stuff like that, you know, it.
Noise, crowding, parking, yeah.
Number of people per.
Sanitation.
Number of people, uh, per bedroom or whatever in that can be, you know.
Depending on the size, I mean, our sanitation code could require, should require maybe a dumpster, and we don't, we don't want to have those.
All right, well, we discussed, uh, a related issue, of course, is that in Holiday Island right now, the city, the revenue is based totally on turnback funds, which are based on the number of resident citizens.
Permanent residents.
There are permanent residents. A VRBO may not have a permanent residence, so there's no city revenue coming from that property. It's probably, those properties probably have increased expenses for police protection and fire protections, such as the fire at Table Rock Landing two years ago. Now, at least they are paying district assessments, and the district is, right now, paying for the sheriff and providing the fire protection, but, um.
So the cost of a business license or, uh, should perhaps reflect in this revenue for not having the other style of residence?
Correct, it'd be my thought. Okay, so Jerry's going to take on business licensing, that we can move on to economic development. The first thing I put on the list was for me to finally do something with resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-one, establishing an, um, a, uh, economic development task force. Um, I need to do that this year.
Is the VBR regulation, is that, Jerry, did he take that to you?
In what?
Is he, are you, are you rolling the VBR over?
I, I think that.
VRBOs are, I mean, that's all going to be under zoning.
Okay, so I, I, I can concentrate on that, just strictly business, all right.
And, and so many of these book, the taxing.
Well, the taxing, um, that comes from establishing an AMP commission. An AMP commission, advertising and promotion commission.
And that would be their source of revenue.
Right, their money would go for an absolutely.
Well, yeah, that you say, what we're going to do with that.
So the tax dollars that you get from hotels and motels really doesn't add anything much to the city revenue.
Well, it fakes, it fakes.
It fakes.
But the license definitely could.
Sir, can I just say, I'm just curious about one other thing, you mentioned the zoning. The street that, that I live on across the street, it's marked as, I understand it's a commercial. The reason it was commercial is the Holiday Island office used to be there, uh, the police department, a lottery mat at the end. Everything over there now is residential, and we are still zoning, it's commercial, so we're paying the commercial paved road the instead of residential art. I talked to a gentleman, I don't remember his name, but he's in this building at the other end, and he said there was absolutely nothing marked as commercial. But when you get your, when you get your printout for the year and you can make your payments, four payments a year, right into my pile, got commercial. So he doesn't know what you're talking about, so. I probably know some things about Holiday Island a lot of people don't know, but.
Uh, there's so many problems with the current coding and assessments that, and until they get, well, statutes changed. We're, we're not here to talk about high set problems, that, that's.
So that's something totally separate. So this is what, planning committee?
This is, this is, this is the city, this is the workshop for the city council.
But are we going to, okay, are we going to wait and see what we do with the licensing, and see what we do to start there? All right, all right, go. Okay, that's enough. Go over there and talk to those folks, we've been trying to. Okay, they, uh, they're not listening very well. Who's the sheriff, what is, who's the sheriff department now, I'm just curious, I mean, eventually we'll know the way I want it. Go around.
Uh, I forgot what the sheriff's name is, Ross, isn't it?
Like there was, like there was a murder on Alman, not too long ago, where some young guy stabbed his dad.
Yeah.
What sheriff department went to that?
Carroll County.
Because there was like twenty-five cars over there.
That's our only sheriff, that's our police out here.
What's the one up there, what's, what's the one up there by the flagpost and all that?
It's Carroll County.
That's a substation of the Carroll County Sheriff.
We're talking about police security, that's not really.
On those major crimes, does the state police sends investigators in as well?
On those major crimes, does the state police sends investigators in as well?
And, uh, we might want to call the sheriff, state police, and, and missing documents.
This, uh, short-term rentals coming up, and taxing is coming up again under economic development. That might be a good place for it, because, you know, like it or not, tourism is probably the number one, um.
Business in Holiday Island.
Yeah, economic opportunity for Holiday Island.
Well, it brings a lot of people into Holiday Island. And I don't know how many I know that originally came to Holiday Island because of time shifts, that's us.
So, I, I don't think we need to talk about whether or not economic development needs to be on the list, but it was on last year already, I just didn't do anything with it, so. I will try to get, um, the, um, some volunteers to work on that. Up until now, Jerry's been doing everything that's been done.
But with regard to VRBO regulation, are we gonna be working it writing with separate ordinance for that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, the reason I mentioned it is because it seems like most of the students have. When residents have specific ordinance.
Rather than rolling everything, having to do that, they'll.
Well, it could, rather.
I mean, it, it gets into zoning with uses and where they can be, but it also gets into there because you have to have a safety inspection, you have to, they, you have to specify business licenses, they, these ordinances specify the, how many people per bedroom. Those kinds of things, or, or some ordinances specify you can only have a certain density per, uh, whatever measure you measure population by.
That, you know, that special regulation or special ordinance you're talking about has to go somewhere in the municipal covenant.
It does. Actually, the one that Fayetteville wrote, they, they actually do their ordinances by attaching the, where they're gonna put it in the code to the back of the front page. Back to the where that.
Okay, um, long-range planning with the, with the district. I don't know how we would go about doing that, but, um, well, I don't know if we, if we have time to worry about that this year, or if I'm playing this full language.
We have an alternative, not to.
Can I suggest an approach? Can I suggest an approach?
Sure.
Um, because I didn't think, I mean, we had worked out really well last year with everybody in the same room together. I was thinking if, if we had a meeting of the council and discussed things that we needed to work on together with HIC, and got our thoughts written down on that, or specified the mess, then HIC maybe has a meeting, and they discuss the same things, look at what we thought, and make their comments and more amendments to it in their meeting. We can attend each other's meetings, nothing says we can't, but we're not the principal discussion people. And then we kind of go back and forth in one or two meetings with each, and come out with a plan.
What kinds of things do you think would be, uh, in that plan, or part of that?
Getting together on the sheriff's contract, maybe one.
Okay, number one.
Getting together on how you're gonna do the roads, number two. Uh, other things along those lines.
Uh, financing.
What do you mean by financing?
Well, uh, we went into the, one of the major tenants or processes behind our drive to incorporation was to reduce the assessment so that they stay within the constraints, that it wouldn't, that it would be self-sustaining rather than going broke in ten years.
Unfortunately, we don't have a say.
And they, they have lost, they have lost sight of that, because they raised them this year.
I don't know how you get on the same page except to lay out the pros and cons.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I hate to get into a contemplational mode, but I think we're damn near there.
I don't agree that we're there.
Well, they're not listening at all.
We're not running the district.
And they, and they say that we don't tell them what we're doing, well, you know, they don't, they don't have to come and see what we're doing.
Maybe some of us need to go to their meetings and.
I, I went to, I go to most of them. But they have, it's, it's not reciprocal, okay? And, uh, you know, I understand that, you know, they have control of most things.
So, you have an idea on how to get past that?
I've been trying. Uh, and I was, I've been talking to one of the commissioners, and he said he wrote, you know, the dual meetings, and that nobody's interested there, so. Cause I have it more than if we did have.
I mean, that, that was.
Well, we didn't go in, we didn't go in on equal footing either, so. I, I just, I've been, uh, I sent you that thing that Kevin Drossen wrote in two thousand and five, when we were, you know, the board of commissioners, at that time requested the district manager to draw up a plan for, you know, dual operation, and one of the things he said in there was, you know, have, uh, set dual meetings. Uh, and, and I, I, did I send that to everybody or not? I just sent it to them. I don't know, can I send that to everybody or not?
You sent it to me, or you gave me a copy of it.
Um, but, uh, I, I think it's, I think it's time for a frank conversation, you know? You know, are we in this together, or are we gonna go? Go.
I, I, I don't share your opinion that it's that bad between us and the district. There was a couple of things that they did, or one thing they did in their budgeting process that we didn't agree with. That doesn't mean that the door is closed between us and the district, it's a long ways from that.
Well, so, they don't have the same vision that I've got, okay? And that's, that, that's not, that's, I mean, that's not, doesn't have to be exclusive, that, you know, including anybody, I just, you know, I thought, you know, that that's what we were gonna do, and we were gonna try to supplement with our funds, their operational costs, so that we could reduce that, and I don't see that happening, it seems like it's just, oh, boy, we got more money.
Well, one of the things you have to remember, too, is that, just like us, they are not of one mind. Everybody on that board has opinions about every subject that comes up, and they don't, aren't always the same, just like us. So, get everybody on the same page, or make the board do anything, it's kind of, it has to be discussed in public and.
I think we need long-range goals, who, who's gonna do what, who, and how we're gonna get there.
That's why I suggested we decide on what our long-range goals are, or what we think they should be, then we throw it to, to HIC, and let them mull it over and discuss it a while, and, and mark it up, and then it comes back to us, and then maybe you.
I have no problem with that.
You can agree on something in the end.
I have no problem with that. We could, you know, you know, everybody come up with what they think, and then come together and have a meeting, and then come up with what we're doing, what we showed to them.
But it should be a property ownership, too.
But that, you know, I think Kevin's thing was, he said a three-year, a three-year plan, and I don't know that we would wanna go further than that, or. But I mean, at some point in time, they've got to realize that, you know, some of the stuff they're doing is gonna go away, and it will become part of the city, and I, right now, I don't see that.
Well, they need about a ten-year plan, if you ask me that. They need a long-term plan on how they survive or don't survive as a HIC.
Well, and we need one, too, because what we're, you know, what, how we're going to progress, because at some point in time, you know, we're going to have to take some revenue, and if it's not offset by a reduction in the, in the assessment, like we all thought, where we were going, angle work. And we all spent a lot of time on that process. But I, I would.
I, I don't disagree that long-range planning is necessary. I'm not sure that we're far enough through the short-range things that need to be done.
Yeah, just getting the city functional.
This, you know, long-range planning may be something we start to do next year, and, and after the city is up and running.
I was, I was talking more specifically about the long-range plan that HIC needs to survive, and then you need to think and how to get there.
Ain't looking there.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna scratch that from the twenty twenty-two.
Why, I thought, I still think.
Scratch which, long-range planning?
Yeah, the long-range planning, cause I just don't see us.
How about short-range planning?
We have a short-range plan, we have a budget, they have a budget.
Well, when it comes to next year, when we, all right. And we get that straightened out when we talk to the sheriff.
Ken, you wanted workspace for building inspector and code enforcement officer added to the list. I think what we have is adequate for now.
Okay, I mean, that, I mean, you and Wes, and you think you can work them, and there's even another desk in there.
I gotta get rid of the cabinet broken, too, when we were trying to move it in there.
I have a fire cell.
The builder in there just put it back again.
It ain't worth, I didn't, I should've went with my first hunch, I didn't want it in the first place, when I figured, let's take it.
Yeah, I didn't think.
We're not broken, too, trying to carry.
We go ahead and put it in a wheelbarrow to get it out of the building.
Uh, I, I think what, what we have is perfectly functional.
Did you get some IT equipment from them, too?
We got the computer.
Two printers, and two printers. One computer, two printers, we need to have the computer come over and revamp that computer, see if it's working.
Um, well, it works, I know.
Well, if it works, you know, you're, you're used to have all the protected software on it, so it's okay.
As far as it working, I was on it today, but, um, all, all that's on it right now is just some basic, really basic files.
And the desktop, the desktop.
And, um, but it does need to be tied into the printers and all that kind of stuff.
You don't need to get somebody on here to.
Yeah, you might wanna start by just getting the model number of the computer and asking him if it's worth investing in, or, I mean, if it's, you know, twenty years old.
And just get the basic info.
Yeah, yeah.
The ad, by the way, was in the Carroll County News yesterday.
And I am getting emails from interested parties. Addition, Ken, I think this is another one you wanted on your additional sources of funding events.
You know, I don't, you know, we did some research. So, I, you know, I would, I would be willing to just start reviewing, you know, some of the cities and see where some of their additional revenue sources are.
The municipal league has been having regular training classes on that very subject, and I haven't had time to sit in on any of it.
Well, I can, I can do that, I'd be willing to do that. And there, and the same thing, there's, there's a lot of additional grants out there, you know, like sidewalks and draven, and just all kinds of things, and.
The lawyer didn't just say sidewalks.
It was the last one they talked about.
Um, and when I was on the board, I was trying to figure out how the hell we could put a sidewalk down Holiday Island Drive without getting people killed by errant golfers. Of course, my balls were right down the wall.
Yeah, fifty yards.
Cut into some yards or something, leave a little mile down.
Yeah, I don't have a yard.
Anyway, but I mean, I mean, there's just, there's just all kinds of different.
What the hell did you have for grants?
What's the next election? Cheerios. Everybody cheer.
Don't wanna sidewalk.
It would be, it would be fantastic if we had a bike lane, walking lane, or sidewalks, not just on Holiday Island Drive, but on Shields and several other streets, but.
There's, you know, last year, you know, I put, you know.
That's the law.
When we dedicated the fishing pier down there, the senator got this representative king, he's there, and he said, I'll get this paid for, even, and I kept bugging people, and, and Lawrence supposedly got the grant to pay that, and it still ain't happened, I don't know what happened.
I don't think he actually got the grant, I think he had to resubmit or.
But there's, you know, but, and there's, but there's just all kinds of different grants in different areas. And I, and I had thought about talking, you know, Sharer said she would, Sharer Taylor, says, you know, she would be willing to write, would, would it be all right if I would talk to Sharer about looking, researching, or be.
I think, you know, I, I guess that, my, my gut reaction is, I don't wanna go out fishing for grant money and then looking for something to spend that grant money on. I think we should start off with a need, and then see if there's grant money that we have to pay for it.
That, that's one thing that once he gets the economic development task force, uh, appointed, that's one of the goals that he, that ordinance or resolution passed, was that they look for grants and, uh, determine needs and look for grants.
I mean, there.
And I, I mean, I, I've sat in on two, uh, municipal league grant, tell them, I don't know what you call it, webinar. So, I mean, we're looking.
One of the things, you know, I've been sitting in on a lot of those seminars myself, and, and read that last, sort of email blast about the sidewalk, that had the sidewalk brand in it.
Oh, I didn't see that.
I thought that's what you were talking about, that was just out last week, or maybe plenty, maybe Friday, or Monday. Anyway, um, they got so much money floating around right now.
I know, I was just.
I mean, there's just wiccoos of money, but you have to fit into these little niches apparently. There were some, there were some webinar they had yesterday, I didn't get to listen to.
That was a splendid rescue money, I think.
It was, and it was, they, they had, they had opened up the rules where you didn't have to follow any of the initial thoughts.
And that was, that was all relative to money that we don't have.
That right.
We didn't qualify, because we weren't incorporated.
Except a lot of that money, you know, went to states and everything that they're trying to get rid of, too. And they may be giving grants on it, too.
They are, I mean, that, those two broadband grants that, that they're in as part of that money, were in two because they changed the rules on the first one, and we got more money, and they decided they need to, uh, hire a two-billion-dollar contractor to dole that money out, which.
Right, it's making a lot of money.
Delayed getting that first money, and they're now looking in April or May time around.
But you also have a lot. But you also have a lot of that money is going to these federal agencies, which is what the point of that recent email that came out earlier this week. Where they were listing this grant opportunity and they're having a webinar maybe today or yesterday about it. And I, you know, if we wait to define projects until, and then look for grant money, we may be waiting forever. Whereas if we had someone out there who had the time to actively look at where this grant money is and go to some of these federal agencies that are giving away money and even maybe the state and find out, go to these sources that are, you know, being advertised at least by the municipality and look for what grant opportunities are out there. It would help us formulate ideas about projects that could provide value to Holiday Island.
Well, I think, you know, that there's.
But I don't know with any of us, I know I don't have a plan to do that.
Well, that was, again, that was the, that was one of the impetuses on the task force is people to volunteer to do that.
So I was wondering maybe could the city ask for volunteers, maybe Chara would devote some time to researching what opportunities are out there and investigating, you know, whether that could be a need at Holiday Island that we could fill or not. Or could somebody else maybe want to volunteer and help our city do that? Does that have a possibility?
How, what panic frames are we looking at for this task force then?
Well, it's, at least, at best, it's third on the list after getting zoning and health and sanitation.
I, I think, I think your point is, is well-taken, but.
Most of the projects that they're talking about at the municipal league that this rescue plan act money is being doled out for. And you're right, it's billions and billions of dollars, but most of it has to be shovel-ready projects. And they have to be targeted towards sewer water, I don't know what it is. Whether the broadband was.
These that they were talking about in the stuff earlier this week were for law enforcement and fire department personnel, things like that.
As far as recouping money for personnel.
The justice.
I know, but we, if it's part of that rescue money, we don't, we didn't have any loss.
Oh, did they, they've taken that rule out of the picture altogether? Yeah. Probably spending it on all kinds of selfish things, who knows?
Boy, I could get in on that. I like foolish things.
The fact that the city is very limited in the scope of what they do right now also excludes us from a lot of those grant opportunities. All that money that they're going out to police departments, we don't have.
We don't have one, I don't, we have a fine.
And, and a lot of them, Linda, are matching, I mean.
Yep, there is some matching component on many of them.
On many of them, and, I mean.
The district is still working with ESI to try to get seven million dollars if we can get it.
And there was some trail money available, there's something I read this week too.
Was that?
Trail money was available and they were looking to do new grants for this year.
What about that sewer debt that Holiday Island's paying off? The grant being?
You can't retire debt with the, any of that COVID money?
I'm just saying, you know, I, I think it would be helpful if we had a person volunteering with the city that could be kind of overall looking at grants all the time.
When I start looking for volunteers to be on the Economic Development Task Force, I'll see if there's somebody that's.
I just, you said wait till we have a need, but, you know, I, I think we ought to see what's out there too.
Well, I think it behooves us to get as many people involved, whether it's task force or chain game, whatever, just to get more opinions than just our.
So that'd be a great idea for that kind of task force agreements.
Okay.
I agree with that too.
Anything else that we should put on the list of things that we should have back on the list here?
I don't know, I, I went back and looked at the one we had for the second half and I thought we got most of them, I think. And that was what we, excuse me, we said. Even if we don't get the district to, we don't participate in a long-range, I, I think, I think we need to be looking at where we wanna be in three, five years.
I don't disagree, but right now we're.
Trying to get through next month? Well, you know, we got this big staff, I mean, we might as well use it.
Alright, anything else? Anything from the?
You got done with this record, huh?
I figured we'd be here by the order in supper.
Alright, if there's nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the workshop. And I, you know, there will be minutes of this, but I'll try to summarize my thoughts on it too.